All right, I have six and I have a forum. So I'm calling a meeting to order and I'm beginning with this notice. As Chairman of the Board of Selectment for the Town of Newton, New Hampshire, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-4, this public body is authorized to meet electronic. Please note that there is no physical location to observe or listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are utilizing Zoom software for this electronic meeting. How members of the board have the ability to communicate during this meeting through the platform? And the public has access to contemporaneous listen and if necessary participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number, 929-205-6099. Meeting ID number is 869-075-36632, where you can use the link that was provided in the agenda posting. We previously gave the notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the conference call via phone. If anyone has a problem, please email blossecretary@newtonnh.net. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all the votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. I'm going to start with a, if I can figure out how to do it, going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. So get my video back here. I want to let people know that, no pressure, but I have a hard stop at seven for another Zoom meeting. And hopefully we can end a little bit earlier than that so I can switch to that Zoom meeting. But if the meeting must continue without me, you're not going to hurt my feelings. And the good news is Larry's here and Diane's got control of the Zoom tonight, so.
And Lisa's here too.
Perfect. So let's jump right in if we could. Trish, can you get us updated with all the news?
Sure. And since everyone has got a lot of meetings, I will try to do this quickly. We have seven reports, so a lot is repetitive. Obviously, the military support is still providing security backup for the planned protests. The Operations Division has deployed the Incident Management Truck and other communication assets to the city of Keene. They have provided video to the state police because of some situational awareness issues going on. Twenty-five first responders have tested positive. Twelve members tracked in quarantine. Fifty-five are frontline workers in Tier One alternative housing. Four are first responders and fifty are healthcare workers. Uh-oh, I don't know what that is. Sorry. I don't know how to stop it.
You don't hear anything, so you're all set.
Oh, you don't? Okay, good. Okay, the next report is, this is Friday morning. Phase two of beaches is in place as of this morning, and again, that was Friday. Open for sunbathing and other traditional beach activities. Then there was a lot of other stuff that is very repetitive, so I'm going to skip over it. And then the noon call on Friday has a lot of guts to it. So let me read all my notes here. The Attorney General said if an employee travels out of state, the question he was posed was must they quarantine? And does the business have to pay the employee? And the AG's office said guidance was put out Thursday night. And if anyone needs a copy of it, I can share it. It's called the Sit Report. Employees of day camps, they said, must meet a 14-day quarantine period. They also, he also said unless state guidelines require a quarantine, then it isn't mandatory. All quarantine compensation plans must be determined through private attorneys. They're going to bring this up a little bit later, and I know the task force, or Nancy, we were talking about this. But we'll talk about that in a little while it comes up again. They said that the question that the AG's office was asking, day camps use buses for pickup and drop off. And this is allowable and it has to be in a staggered way. They also said that concerts and events are currently prohibited due to the stay-at-home order, but only effective until June 15th at this point. So more things will happen next Monday. We had another question from a town that said nonprofit organizations like Rotary Clubs, et cetera. If they have six people to a table outdoors and they're following guidance, are they still subject to the restrictions of the Executive Order or Emergency Order 17? And the answer was yes, we'll get guidance tomorrow today or in the coming days for special events. And again, wanted to defer to Monday the 15th. Another town asked about opening government buildings on June 15th. And does the town have the authority to require visitors to wear masks? And do we have the authority to require temperature checks? And the answer is the Select Board has the authority under RSA 41 to regulate municipal property unless it has been delegated to another authority. And the example was, for instance, the libraries may be able to do their own thing. They also said it's a good idea to have supplies of disposable masks if possible so that if somebody comes to the door, and in our case it would be for an appointment, we have a mask if they don't have one. Otherwise, you can refuse to let them in. They said you should work with the EMD, police and fire to figure out what action you'll take if somebody does refuse. And again, somebody can refuse for medical reasons. And then they said, is it reasonable to charge what you paid for a mask for individuals in order to get them when they want to come in? And this, a lot of conversation went back and forth on this. And actually, the task force also talked about this. And for the most part, they said it's best to educate our residents that, you know, the first time around, if you have an appointment, we can supply a mask, but after that, we don't have to. And that if a town wanted to charge for them, obviously you can't price gouge, you could charge what you paid. But then we had someone else say that that would be a bookkeeping nightmare and what account you put the money in. And the task force did talk about it and we agreed with that. We thought that would be a nightmare. We had another question that said this town was having an art show and they want to do it outdoors. It's not a retail outlet or an essential business. So is it permitted or do they have to wait for further guidance? And in our Situation Report 77, there's a full guidance on craft fairs. And it would follow under this guidance. So if we have any issues or if that's something we feel we have to post once we get our website up and running in the way that the task force would like to, we can always put that guidance up there. There was another question about libraries and filing for COVID reimbursements. They said that library trustees were wondering when they want improvements, does it go through the town or is it separate? And the question was, is it a town-owned building? Usually they, sorry, it is a town-owned building, but they usually make their own decisions. And the answer is the libraries really should work with the field rep and Emergency Management Director for the town. There are requirements and measures taken under the disaster work. We just have to go through the process with a library, which may be a little bit different. Sorry, geez, I'm losing my voice. I'll be a perfect wife here. We said, we have another question that we have a small swimming area with a small bathroom with men's sides and ladies' side. These are only cleaned once a week, so we are hesitant to open, but we're getting pushback from the town's residents. The answer is they're going to give us guidance, but being a municipality may give you leeway. There is no requirement that must be followed. It is up to the discretion of the town, or in our case, it would be to the Board of Selectment. There was a lot of guidelines to date and frequent cleaning is highly recommended by CDC. And then Primex commented and said that as far as they're concerned in their policy, once a week does not satisfy risk management for the town and best practice requirement. And if you had any questions about that, Primex definitely said call them and they can walk through alternatives. We had another question, if someone travels outside New Hampshire, what is the answer in regard to quarantine? And the answer was as for state restriction, there is only a 14-day restriction. For individual businesses, it's up to its discretion. There is a recommendation of a quarantine, but that is not mandatory from the state level. And then New Hampshire Municipal Association got on and said this would be local decisions as to how a municipality would like to handle this. And that they want to clarify as far as rules, oh, sorry, second subject. They wanted to clarify, there was another question about fireworks. And they said as far as the rules go, can fireworks shows be held? And held as a drive-in type of show, everyone stays in their vehicles? And the answer from the AG's office is yes. People will be required to stay in their cars. But again, this may change on June 15th. So we'll be very anxious to see all the new guidelines that are being amended on Monday. We had another question, requirement on travel guidance. Saying anyone traveling internationally or outside of Vermont, New Hampshire or Maine, should quarantine for 14 days? And the answer is similar to what I just said on the previous page. This is not a requirement, but it's highly recommended. There evidently is now, of course, you know, you've got to love lawsuits. There is a legal challenge to Nashville right now facing covering ordinances. And if it's legally right, a preliminary hearing has yet to occur, but no orders have been issued at this time. So I guess we're taking away people's rights. That's probably what that's about. We'll find out more about that. Our next call was a lot of planning by the state EOC. There was a lot of active rallies that took place over the weekend. And they thanked everybody for helping. There's more rallies coming up this week, but everything seemed to go smooth. Military was also on the call and they said they're continuing to support the missions, meaning all our PPEs that are still coming in and in some cases still hard to get. It is requiring military protection, so they are still working on that. And military also worked over the weekend to support the response to protests around the state. And we did have quite a few, but they seem to be under control. We now have 26 first responders that have tested positive for COVID-19. Seventeen members tracked in quarantine. Six will fire, six EMS and five PD. We have 61 frontline workers in Tier One alternative housing. Four of those were first responders and 57 were healthcare workers. They also wanted us to know that they had two search and rescue events over the weekend. Again, more and more people are coming out and as a result, they're getting more calls for search and rescue. A hiker was injured in Lincoln and children were lost in Plastow. We had two OHRv crashes. One was in Pittsburgh and it was a DWI and one in Hawkington. And all victims were New Hampshire residents. They also had a dive team that had a successful find in an evidence search for the state police. So that was successful. They didn't go into details with that. They also said that they had to provide additional law enforcement to support a number of municipalities and also the State House regarding the rallies, but all went well. The next call, we had a question, schools are asking, when would they be able to order PPEs? And the answer was the Department of Education is working on establishing a task force. And when that is public, they will be processing orders for the education school system. And they'll announce the dates as soon as everything's up and ready. A fire chief wanted to know, can there be 10-plus people for firefighter trainings? And the answer is there are exceptions, but yes, the trainings for firefighters will be okay. There was another question, is the guidance for outdoor town pools? What is it, if there is any? And their answer was we'll follow up with you and get guidance. But municipalities are able to open or close as the town or the Board of Selectment sees fit. There is guidance from the CDC. There was another question, can organizations like a Rotary Club host their change of command meetings? And they said, please tell them to wait until June 15th. After that date, more things are going to be permitted to open. And they will be able to follow, in this case, restaurant guidance. Now the question about racetracks, can we open without spectators? And the answer is yes, they don't, they can open without spectators. We had another town that wanted, said that they were, would they be sued? If someone were to contract COVID at a town event like a farmer's market, oh goodness, now we've got to worry about this. This is a question for all the municipal association. And we will tell them that you're looking for an answer. They hope the municipal association is going to come up with some kind of guidance. And they were going to provide it on today's call, but that didn't happen yet. There was another question, if a municipal employee takes a vacation, do they need to self-quarantine upon returning? And again, municipal association is working on an answer for us and will get back to us, hopefully on tomorrow's call. Another question, is there a standard form for hotels to use for guests to fill out? Stating they've been self-quarantined for 14 days prior to their visit. This would also apply to any Airbnbs, and I don't even know if we have any in town. We don't have, obviously, hotels. And the answer is no, the state will not be creating a standard form. Businesses can create their own and if they have any issues, they can contact the AG's office for additional guidance. Also, additional guidance came out on our Situation Report in answer to if an employee travels out of state. So here's their answer. The question started out, if an employee travels out of state, are they required to quarantine for 14 days upon return? And are businesses required to pay the employee while in quarantine? Here's the answer. There is no broad state requirement that employees quarantine for 14 days after traveling out of state. Department of Health has published, suggested best practices about out-of-state travel. And there's a link that we can go to. It says certain state guidelines such as like daycare camps may require an out-of-state employee to meet the 14-day period prior to beginning employment. Unless the state guidelines is applicable to the particular business to require that 14-day period, there is no mandatory requirement for employees to quarantine for 14 days upon returning to work if they were out of state. If a municipality has adopted such a requirement, it will be up to each municipality to decide whether and how to enforce the restriction and whether or not to pay. If a business chooses to adopt a mandatory quarantine period for employees that travel out of state, it will be up to each business as to whether and how to compensate that individual. All quarantine restrictions and compensation plans must comport with the applicable federal and state employment wage and hour laws. And then the next call was, you probably heard, the state of emergency has been extended through June 25th. Military said they're still supporting protests around the state, but everything seems to be calm. I'm going to skip over that. And then the next call, this is about numbers. So we had 5,132 positives. That's up 337 since we last spoke last Wednesday night. We have 1,337 current. We have 294 deaths. Unfortunately, that's up 29 since last Wednesday night when we spoke. 496 hospitalizations, 80 of them are current. So 496 have been in the hospital that are New Hampshire residents, but out of that, there's only 80 that are currently in the hospital. Department of Health is still focusing on PPEs. They also have a new warehouse, so they're scaling down and trying to get all the PPEs in the new warehouse. So they're working on that. This is interesting, Department of Health is looking at dispensing medication in the fall if necessary. So I don't know what that means. More to come, I'm sure. Military said they're still, they still continue to have soldiers on standby for the rallies. And military is still supporting or protecting food bank areas. And evidently, there's a big load coming in on the 12th, so their military is going to be protecting them. We have at this point 26 first responders tested positive. Thirteen members in quarantine. Out of those six firefighters, two EMS, five PD. 64 frontline workers in alternative housing. Out of that, five were first responders, five are healthcare. Actually, that's got to be wrong, so whatever the difference is, must be healthcare workers. They also talked about aviation. They said United Airlines reports delaying their return to Manchester. And they are actually putting it off till September. Media, obviously, there's a lot of mixed comments about law enforcement regarding the rallies and what has happened. Negative sentiment is really high. There seems to be a lot of social media and concern over what is going to happen to homeless individuals after the quarantine housing subsides. And there's also now concern over the loss in profits from tourism. And the only other thing that I wanted to share was there's new guidance as of yesterday about beaches. And I thought maybe I could send some of this to Matt for Rec. One of them says the operating guidance, all beach businesses must operate in accordance with universal and specific industry guidelines. They also said during both early stages of reopening of beaches, do a coordinated effort around public safety headed up by public town officials. Educate as opposed to issue violations. There was also a plan regarding beaches. Basically said they reviewed on a weekly basis, each town that has a beach should review what's happening and provide ongoing coordination, evaluation of issues and address any local operational needs that may come up regarding beaches. And then there was new guidance as of yesterday for campgrounds. And Larry is aware of that. We really, we've only got two really in town. We've got the one over by the boat launch and then we've got the one by the beach. And he's been down there a couple of times and spoken to them. So that's my reports.
Thank you. Lot of info because it's been essentially a week since we met. What I wanted to do is turn it over to what's been going on with the task force, the reopening task force in terms of the next phase. Because I think we're in agreement, we're going to approach this in phases. Now, Trish had collected everything, kind of sent it to the Board of Selectment. So I want to try to avoid going line item by line item tonight in this meeting. We could obviously, you know, embed this in the minutes because Diane, I'm sure you have the form, so we could, we could put it in the minutes for people to look at later. I didn't really see much on there that I had any concerns with. My only concern is I think we need to illustrate somehow what the cost is going to be. If that cost is only what we've already approved, then that's, that's fine as long as we, we, you know, have it on there. But if there's any additional costs, I think we need kind of a, like a bottom line price to move in this direction. And so what I would invite whoever wants to speak on this, kind of give us the very general highlights about what, what we need the board's approval on tonight.
Sure. Well, I could probably help and we've got a lot of people on the call that, you know, can jump in. Probably the most expensive thing that is not on here but was approved was hand sanitizing stations. And we bought those, I want to say we bought 14 so that we didn't have a bad luck number. And I believe.
Great idea.
And I believe they were $200 for the pedestal and the unit itself. Chief Jewett might be able to jump in. I can't remember if that also included the 20 gallons of the liquid. It might be in addition to that, I'm not sure. That's probably the biggest cost that we have. We'll have to get a few more signs and they're small signs. I can't imagine, you know, I'm waiting for a price. Actually, I've called two different sign companies. And they're just the small signs for the bathroom areas and a couple that say authorized personnel only. We did talk in our call about the website. And being very clear and actually Kate commented on that. We want to make sure, our task force wants to make sure that the website has whatever the process is going to be when you have an appointment. And Diane has already started putting together some stuff that came up during our meeting that we'll be able to put on the website. And then it was suggested that we take all this information and make a flyer out of it. And somebody thought maybe somebody knew a Realtor that might have a brochure box. So I'm going to see if I have some that don't have a company name on it. And we thought we could put the brochure box, one outside the library, one outside the town hall, which clearly indicates the procedure for access. And then it was suggested, as you can see on one of my attachments that you got, which was the recommendations to the Board of Selectment. The number six was our outside billboard. Maybe should say our website so that we can direct people there. And then it was suggested during our meeting, we should put open by appointment only and the town hall phone number. So that we, we should be pushing people probably to the website. And the only people that's going to affect is really people that don't have a computer. And then hopefully they'll come to the door and see there's a brochure box so that that's going to tell them how to get in and make their appointments and do what they have to do. So money-wise, in answer to your question, I can't imagine, I mean, the task force, a lot of the task force is on the phone. I can't imagine more than maybe another $200 on top of whatever the sanitizer stuff costs. We already got the mats, the footprint mats. During our meeting, we kind of touched on, is there a way to keep people to the left when they're coming in so that they're not gathering by Nancy's door, the kitchen door and by the computer table, which probably will be moved, I would think. And we probably could strategically place those footprints to keep people to the left and maybe even add a sign, please keep to the left. Other than, Chief Jewett, do you off the top of your head know your price on those? Was I correct about those gallons? Were they included in that $200 a unit?
Off the top of my head, I don't know. I believe they were in addition to that. I think what, why we're thinking that they may have been is just because the, when we purchase, we, one per unit.
Right, okay, okay. And then the only other thing, and Diane, Nancy, Charlie, Larry, Chief Jewett. And then the only other thing, and Diane, Nancy, Charlie, Larry, Chief Jewitt, Chief Alcindino, Diane, jump in if you, you know, if I'm forgetting anything, but I did get an email from Kate, and I don't know if money-wise, what this, this would cost, so this is the first time everyone's hearing this. And certainly, the task force can look at it, and Larry, you may even have a comment about it. Is there a way that we could get our system have HEPA filters, so that our air quality is maybe better than it is now, and I don't even know if it's bad now, maybe the air quality should be checked? That's a question that I don't know the answer to as far as money goes, or even if we can do it with our, our HVAC system. I don't know.
I was actually referring to standalone units that cover certain square footage, particularly in the area where the Mary Jo works, or where people are gonna be coming in and out. I have some here, I think they were like, the good ones are about two hundred and fifty dollars. They're different micron particles they do. It just was another thing, because enclosed, my concern is, with all the research coming out, is enclosed spaces with stagnant, bad, smaller workspaces indoors, bad air quality, you know, not good circulation, which of course basically describes town hall. So I was thinking of maybe, I know every, the list was great for, was great, but thinking about adding that, especially if you get, can get a reimbursement of seventy-five percent, that maybe to look into some of those units. Because the square footage where people come in and out is really not very big, so some of the standalones would work pretty well, and again, not hugely expensive. I think, I think it would cost a mint to put it through, like, the holes. But whatever we've got going, I don't think that's feasible, who knows?
And Larry may have input on it, you know, I, I'm not quite sure if we can, like I said to you, we could try putting it through for the seventy-five percent on the, the first Gopher grant has already been done, and now we're in the second cycle. And the FEMA grant probably wouldn't cover it, I don't know, Larry would have to jump in. Maybe we could put it in under Gopher, I'm not sure.
Okay, yeah, I know Mary Jo had mentioned she had a, I think she said she had a device she was gonna bring in for herself, but just, that would be, I think, a great idea, just on the space where people come in and out.
Okay.
So I, I think, I think for me, you know, the thing we have to remember is what keeps coming to mind with me is this is where we have a throttle, we're advancing the throttle. And we're gonna see how far we can go before the throttle kicks back on us. Hopefully, it doesn't kick back, hopefully, we slowly advance the throttle, we get all the way to, you know, whatever normal is. But if, if for some reason we do this, and we do it for a couple of weeks, and we're having problems, we need to be able to pull back on the throttle and go back to whatever it is we're doing and reevaluate. That's kind of what we have to remember. So to me, this, at a, at a high level, if I'm recalling what I read, is it's basically two days, that the public can make appointments to come in to town hall, is that correct?
That's two days for Mary Jo.
Mary Jo.
Jack's collector.
Yeah, right, right.
Right, if somebody
That's all.
If, if somebody needs to see the assessor, that would, she would have to make, they would have to make one in for Wednesday.
Yeah, the, the highest percentage, I think, of
Yes.
So that's what I'm most worried about. But, so I guess, what the rest of the board think? Do we wanna make a motion to support the plan? What's the board thinking?
Couple of things I wanna touch on first, looking at the plan. One, I'm not seeing proposed hours for the library. Do we have any from the task force?
No, that's gonna be up to the trustees, it's kind of a separate entity. And, you know, when they get back to Terry, I don't know if she's on the call, I know they've been meeting regularly. They make the recommendation, and unfortunately, you as the Board of Selectmen, and it's a really weird thing, you just, I guess, you're under the recommendation of the trustees to do what they want.
Yeah, just a little historical aspect is, back in March, right before we met and we shut everything down, I put a phone call into the trustees, and I said, this is what we're going to do tonight as the Board of Selectmen, or we're planning to do tonight. So you guys need to take it under consideration. So that was to close, they voted to close. They could, technically, they could vote to open completely tomorrow, so
That's correct.
So it's, we wanna keep the channels of communication open, but they are out of scope, I feel, from what we're doing right now.
All right, I just wanted to make sure that was out in the public, so that they knew it wasn't part of our scope of work. So library opening or closing is under the library trustees' authority.
Correct.
All right, so the other thing that I want clarification on is I'm seeing screening tables and logs. Is it intended to be the honor system, that when someone comes in, that they're going to record their temp and their name? Or are we going to be required to have people banning the honor tables? Such as at the town beach?
Right, great question, Lisa. So here's what has happened in many of our legal calls, that has come up. And you as a town official, that obviously is a big deal. What does that mean? Are you hiring somebody to do this? What's happening? So the recommendations and the task force talked about this as well, pretty heavily, actually. What the other legal guidelines were recommended is you can do it either way. Many times, it's easier to, and, and Mary Jo is doing this already. She screens her calls for appointments. He basically is telling them, this is what I, you know, have you been near anyone that's COVID, do you have a temperature? You need to take your temperature at home before you come in, and then you will be required to sign in on a log. And yes, you're right, it's the honor system, and yes, can people fib? I'm sure that they could. But the idea is, on this log, to do the best that we can. And if somebody all of a sudden gets COVID, and typically, the police and fire on our E-911 list would be notified. We can go to our clipboards, and when I say we, the individual entity that's keeping the clipboard, so in the town hall, it's gonna be in the town hall, the library's gonna have their own. Transfer station's gonna have their own, beach is gonna have their own. They, they can look to see, okay, who was working on this day, because now this person logged in, and they may have, they have COVID symptoms and they're being tested. So we do, we talked on the task force about, you know, having somebody stand there and aim the thermometer at them. But many towns are just doing the honor system, asking the questions, and then people are logging in, whatever their temperature was, when they took it at home. This will be up to the Board of Selectmen, you guys, if you don't like that, you can make another decision.
And couldn't, couldn't Mary, whoever they're coming to see, just say, oh, did you fill in the form? And if they didn't, they can say, go fill in the form, I mean.
Yeah, they can't come in without doing the log. This is, CDC is recommending this. And the log is again for everyone's protection. So, and Mary Jo said she, and I'm sure she is, she's a feisty little thing. I'm sure she's telling everyone, take your temperature, do you have, asking the questions, we've got specific questions that have to be asked. It'll be on that log. And they sign in, and if they don't wanna sign in, they're not gonna come in. And if they don't have a mask, they're not gonna come in.
Yeah, the only, the only place I see that might not work is at the beach, unless you have someone there, or you only have the beach open when the lifeguards are there, or something to that effect.
So let's, let's, let me jump in on this one, let's be clear. Beach is out of scope of this, correct?
Yeah, only the beach temperature thing, it's just for employees, it's not for the public.
Correct, yep. So this was not meant to include the beach, Lisa.
Okay, that's good. Sorry, Lisa. What I'm looking at, item nine says beach should be keeping a screening log.
Yes, and I should've said for employees, and I did talk to Pat about it, she knows, and Scott Doyle is right on top of it.
Okay, then I'm good.
Sorry about that.
Ahead of that, that, that curve. The only thing I would add is, in terms of this is, and I'm gonna be very frank with the public, is this type of activity is like any mitigation steps. It is designed to help and potentially eliminate risk. But there is no guarantee it's going to work, but I think as the public gets more in the mindset of, there are things I need to do before I enter a place, they'll be more likely to kind of self-check. And, you know, I can tell you, side note, this is what the daycare is doing every morning right now in town. Is, the kids get zapped with the, with the thermometer, they don't enter without it, we have to answer the questions, and haven't been turned away yet.
Knock on wood.
Okay, so I do have one more, sorry, that I forgot to mention. My concern is with ADA access. It appears that we're planning on entry through the side door, exit through the front door. As you know, the front entrance is not handicapped accessible.
Yep, so we've discussed that, and legal weighed in on that. And it's gonna be handled, Mary Jo and the task force, and everyone at town hall already that's on the committee. No, with ADA, if we have somebody that's, maybe they're, they're not in a wheelchair, maybe they're, I don't know, old like me, and they have trouble with stairs. If they say, I really can't do the stairs, then the people, if we only have one person on the footsteps in the hall, they will be asked to leave, so this person can leave. So AD access is gonna be completely taken care of with the people with the appointments that are making the appointments, so they know how to deal with this. So we did cover that completely.
Okay, good.
Good question.
Awesome. Charlie and Larry, what are your thoughts, if any?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, so no, my, I had those questions, but also, at the transfer station, that's only for employees too, correct? Does it make it sound like anyone who goes there?
Correct, that's employees only, yep, right, Larry.
Okay, no, no, that, it sounds like a good plan.
Okay.
I have one other thing, Matt.
Let's just give Charlie a shot here, and then back to Trish.
Sorry.
That's okay. Charlie, you on mute?
Star six, on mute.
All right. Charlie must be agreeing with everything then. Trish, one more.
So, so a question for the Board of Selectmen. On the, if I can just cover the action items, there's a couple things that will have to be done, you know, before we actually open, and you'll notice the suggested date isn't until after the Fourth of July, because we really have to wait till the panels are in and our safety work is complete. But some of the stuff is things that Tony can do. Evidently, there's some lights outside that aren't working correctly. We're hoping that he can trim the bushes by the front door, not cut them down, but trim them. And then Chief Jewitt, and I were chatting today, and he did check our hand sanitizer stations. We weren't sure if there was gonna be an issue with them. There is not, they work really well. And it would be great if, you know, on Tony's, somehow on his schedule, they are upstairs at town hall, if he could start putting those together, and Chief Jewitt said he did talk to Tony about this, I don't know, Chief, if you wanna weigh in on this?
I know, I did mention it to him earlier, just saying about him, because he was asking some questions about him, but I didn't give him direction to put them together, I figured the task force would tackle that.
Okay.
Yeah, so Nancy, and you can put that on his to-do list, right? Nancy, thank you. Yeah, I test, I test throw one today, it worked very well, my hands felt very disinfected.
How many, how many are we putting up? One upstairs, one downstairs?
I think it's all in that list.
Yeah, it's in that list that I sent.
All right.
So there's one town hall, I know Charlie's waiting to talk, one upstairs, one downstairs, one at the food pantry, one at planning board.
Okay.
Charlie, go.
Matt, I have to ask this question, because I know I'm gonna be asked it. If we're only gonna have our employee working three hours a week, right? Is that to the public? But is that employee gonna be there the rest of the time doing other work? Or is that employee gonna be there just for the three hours, and we're gonna pay a full paycheck? Or do we lay them off and just bring them in for the three hours, or have Mary Jo take that three hours as well? I'm gonna be asked that question, so I'm asking it.
So I would, I would ask this, are you, you don't have to name a name, but you're talking about the, the deputy clerk position?
Yes.
Yeah, and I, I believe the deputy clerk, well, first of all, is, we all should know, the deputy clerk has been employed this whole time. This would be, we brought the clerk, deputy clerk back on site as, this past Monday, I believe. So the reason we brought them back was because we thought safe to do so with mitigation, and they were, they have been doing a lot of work during that time, so I think the answer to the question, and I don't think Mary Jo's on, but I think the answer to the question is, we're providing a window for the public to come in and get their service. Same time, there's still work being performed. Can anybody tell?
Matt, what you're gonna, what you're gonna be saying is, that we're gonna have six hours to the public, but we're paying X amount of dollars for the rest, that's all, that's all I need answered.
Okay.
It's six hours to the public, but the employee is still working outside of the public hours?
If the board's saying that, then that's what I can repeat. I wanna be able to repeat it, because I'm gonna be asked it, believe me.
Right, so this is what the board has been informed, that, that there's enough work for the normal amount of hours. And like I said, somebody can jump in and tell me wrong, but that's what my understanding as a board member is.
Okay, now, what I don't see is any mention about the building department. Is there a plan for that, Trish?
Sorry, Lisa. So the building department, I know at one point, the task force did talk about maybe even moving his location, but I think Nancy probably can weigh in. He's very comfortable doing what he's doing, which is on, all online. And I believe he may start, and maybe he already is, and Nancy could answer this. I think he only sees people either maybe Thursday night and Saturdays, but he's been meeting them at the location of the house he's inspecting. Not coming to town hall, but that's certainly something that the board can look at if you want something different.
I, I'm more referring to the employee that is not currently working because town hall is closed. Will that employee come in for non-public work and actually go back to work?
I think that's up to you guys, I think that's above the task force purview.
I can speak on that a little bit, I think Shanti wants to speak with the board about it, maybe in another meeting. But his thought was that if the employee comes back to work, she is not dealing with the public. She would only be doing work at the computer that he's requiring her to do. He said there's plenty of paperwork, plenty of permits to, to print, and things like that. And he said he would spend some time with her to train her with the new permit system, and then go from there, but there would be no customers coming into her.
Yeah, that's, that's okay, I just wanna make sure that she's not, that if none of the other employees are still getting paid for COVID hours and not working, that we don't, that it's no employee getting
Well, I think he wanted to talk to the board and get your feel on what his ideas are. Maybe next Tuesday, I'm hoping.
Yeah, basically, the way I see it is, this list is reflective of what department heads see as a, kind of the burning need to change current state. Whereas, you know, Mary Jo's getting tons of people wanting to come in, they're knocking on windows and stuff. So we need to talk to the department head in the building department about what I think So we need to talk to the department head and the Building Department about what I think would be in that phase.
Okay.
Nancy just talked about.
So can I just add something slightly off topic, but in relation to the motion?
Sure.
Public restrooms. I remember after we were talking about the porta potty at the public beach and doing a lot of research and well, this isn't nice, but fecal matter is a supposed form of transmission, small enclosed space. Do we, I'm wondering as we phase in, I guess it's not till July, if we should consider then do we, okay, I guess one thing, do we really need public restrooms opened in the initial phase? Since it's going to be brief appointments, because someone, to make it, when I was researching this, you're supposed to clean them a very special way every day. Which, are we going to be doing that? And is it really right to ask, you know, you guys, to be cleaning toilets of people? I, I, my opinion would be a good idea not to open the public restrooms at first and see how it goes until we have a very, or if there's an emergency. I don't know how to handle it, but I think it's, it's a, it's not a safe idea.
So I'm, I, this is a first for me tonight as a Board member. I've been on the, the Board's six years and I've never talked about restrooms and fecal matter. So this is new.
It's a weird guy, right?
Right down.
Hey Matt?
Oh, perfect. Is that the chief?
No, it's Larry.
Larry.
Oh, it's Larry. Larry, save us.
No, that's fine. We have time to work out those details. Well, we'll get advice from the state whether we can close a public restroom or not. I, I need to bring up that issue I talked to you earlier because I know you're leaving and Jim's leaving.
Yeah, hang on just a sec. So, so Kate, are you okay with we can have, have them take that one and run with it and see what, maybe Nancy, you could discuss with Tony, get Trish's CDC guidelines and
On fecal matter.
On fecal matter.
In the meantime, I would like to make a motion.
Perfect.
Authorize the soft opening phase effective July 6th as outlined by the task force.
Outlined by the task force includes the opening of the public restroom, so we need to just alter that.
No, we can come back and do that, do another motion later if we want to. Because like I said, it's effective July 6th. We can make any change after tonight if we need to.
Yeah. Second.
Seconded by Larry. Discussion? You still want to discuss the bathrooms? Is that?
I could discuss fecal matter all day, but I'll stop.
Alright, let's do a roll call vote. Charlie, how do you vote?
Yay.
Larry?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
That's an aye, that's unanimous. So I believe Larry, your topic involves extended office hours. Well, not so much office hours, but extended hours for the Planning Board Administrator to enter the building. Is that what it is?
Well, it is, we had the Planning Board meeting last night and we're going to start opening up public hearings on our July, I think it's 14th meeting. We have five public hearings that are scheduled and we're falling behind because of the past, I'm going to say eight weeks that Jim wasn't able to go into Town Hall his full 16 hours. He needs more time within the next four weeks to bring everything up to par so we can hold those hearings on the 14th. He's requesting, and the Planning Board's requesting through the Board of Selectmen, if we can add six hours each week for the next four weeks so he can catch up at Town Hall. He'll go in from upstairs and leave from upstairs and use the bathroom upstairs. He will not enter downstairs. So the question is, we need to add the six hours to his 16 that he has already to be 22, more than 22, up to 22 for the next four weeks.
So we're saying 22 hours in Town Hall and 10 hours work from home?
No, no, Jim, Jim, can you give me the breakdown of how many hours you need at Town Hall?
Jim left.
He dropped.
Six hours, four weeks, 24.
I think I.
Lisa, he's doing six. He's doing 16 hours now. He said he's doing most of those at Town Hall, but it's not enough time to get all, everything ready for the July 14th meeting.
Yep, but he, he's regularly scheduled for 32 hours a week.
No, 16.
No, he's not.
Oh, he's, he's only 16 hours a week?
16, yes.
Yeah, 16 hours. And he wants to go to 22 just for the next four weeks, up to 22.
Yeah, so I guess, I guess is the main concern that the Board allow him access? Or is the main concern that the Board approves his increase in hours?
We have to approve his increased hours because he was only hired for 16.
Right, so it's not in our budget, correct?
No.
The Planning Board said, no, the Planning Board said they had it in their budget. I asked them directly last night.
Alright, so that to me is, is a good reason to approve it. What's the Board think?
All in favor, favor.
What is the timeframe again, Larry?
It'll start this Sunday and then four weeks from there.
Alright, so for four weeks increases hours to 22?
Up to 22, right.
Alright, so I, I'm okay with making the motion to temporarily increase the Planning Board Administrative Assistant Hours to, up to 22 hours per week for the next four weeks.
Is that starting when?
Sunday, which is what, the 14th, I think.
Okay.
Alright, so starting Sunday.
Seconded by Charlie. Let's do a roll call vote. Larry, how do you vote?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
That's an aye, that's unanimous. I, I think at this point, hold on Diane, I'll get you. I think at this point, as far as increased access, I don't think we need a motion. I think he just needs to make the right mitigation steps. And I, I personally don't have any issue with him working extra in the Town Hall. What's the Board think?
No, I agree because his hours are spent upstairs away from all the other employees.
Yeah, and if he comes down.
He has his own entrance.
Yeah.
He, he said he's not going downstairs. He has all the PP equipment I gave him last week. He has his own, own coffee maker upstairs. He goes out the back door, in the back door. He was aware of all that before we even discussed it.
Yeah, so all those 22 hours can be done at Town Hall in the Planning Board Administrative Office.
Diane, you were wailing.
Yeah. I was just looking at the calendar for Jim and the public hearing is July 14th. I would like, I would like to recommend that you extend it, not four weeks, but set a date to like July 18th. So that way that he has enough time to work to that, planning that public hearing. Because I think there are like five hearings he has to do that day.
Alright, so I will accept the amendment to my motion to be, what is July 19th?
No, you're going to go from June 14th to July 18th.
Okay, I agreed. I, I accept that amendment.
Okay, I think, I think that'll really kind of help out there.
And do we have a second on that amendment?
Second.
Everybody still happy?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so I have to drop off this call. Larry is more welcome to continue on the meeting.
We've covered everything though, haven't we?
There are two motions on the agenda for the, what do you call it?
What?
Oh, yep, okay.
And you have an intent to cut as well.
Alright, so I will talk to everybody later, but if you guys want to do those, I will talk to everybody soon. Thank you.
Bye, Matt.
Bye.
Bye.
Diane, I don't have that paperwork in front of me. I only have the task force agenda.
Alright, so there's an intent to cut, which is tax map 10, 7, 6.
Yep, I got it. So I will move to sign the intent to cut for map 10-7-6.
Second.
Did I discuss? Do we have a discussion?
Yes.
Okay, so from a conservation standpoint, that's on Thornell Road. I, it's a scenic road if.
No, 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 Trisha, it isn't. It's Maple Ave.
Oh, oh, Maple Ave's scenic too. Okay, so I guess my question would be for conservation. And Lisa, you can jump in too. It would, we'd need to make sure in this intent to cut that it's just on their property, not within the town right of way of the road. And I, I don't have that in front of me, so I don't know what it is.
Yeah, I don't either.
Just so you know, they already cut.
Oh, of course they did.
Of course they did.
You've got to be kidding me.
Yep, yep. But I don't think there was much near the road.
Really?
I don't think there was. But if you drive down Maple, you can't miss it. It's on the right-hand side coming toward Southampton.
I'll drive down Maple, have coffee ready.
There you go.
Alright, thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
Alright, Larry, you going to call the roll call?
Yeah, roll call, Charlie?
No.
What was that?
That was a no.
Done, right?
It's already done.
Already done. All done. But I'm voting no because he did it before he got his permission.
Yeah, I'll nay it then. I'll go with you, Charlie.
Kate, you have a no?
Yes, I'm a nay because it wasn't done properly.
Alright, so before I cast my vote, I have a question. What happens when the Board doesn't sign the intent to cut?
If you want to get tax dollars, you better vote for it because he's already cut it. If we don't do this, we won't be able to send it to the state. They won't be able to get tax money to us.
Okay, in that case, I vote yes.
They could be sent a letter and be, you know, penalized, not penalized, but you know, scolded or something.
He has to file a report, I'm told, the landowner.
Well, the cut is already done, so now he reports it with the state.
Hold on, I have a person here going to make a comment.
Hi, this is, sorry, I don't want to be in there. This is Mike Andrews. I do have a tree farm. I'm familiar with our timber sales. He still will have to file a report of the cut and that is what the, the taxes will be based on.
Right.
And just, I would believe by denying the intent to cut, it's going to send him back. He can still appeal to the state. He's going to have to do the report because that's the.
He's going, he's going to do the report. He is.
Yeah, essentially, it's the Board's decision, but by him cutting without the intent to cut, he, that was a forestry law violation.
Right, and that's what I'm saying. The state can go after him for that.
But how would the state know to go after him for that?
Because once I send this up to them, they're going to know that he already cut.
And you can't send it up if it's not signed, correct?
I need the, I need the approval of the Board.
So if we approve it, we can send a letter with that to the state saying it was, it was done before the vote.
Yep, I can do that.
Charlie, you happy with that? Kate?
Wait, what was done before the vote?
He, he already, that should be noted.
Okay. We would have approved anyway.
You're going to get.
Okay.
I'm going to stay the way I am.
Well, I am too, but your guys are going to have a quorum, so don't worry.
Actually.
It's Matt.
Yes, we don't have Matt, so if you're a no, Kate, it does not get signed.
Doesn't matter if we don't sign it, right?
Nope, so.
You won't be able to fill them.
I realize that. I'm voting, I'm an aye.
With the attachment.
Yeah, I'll do the letter.
Okay, then we'll get this off the docket and he'll be whatever.
Kate, you have an aye? Lisa, you have an aye?
I moved to an aye with the attachment. We're added, we're added to it, the letter.
I'll be an aye with the attachment and send him a stiff warning. I don't know if Trish, your department can do anything about that too?
Right, I, I'm listening. And Conservation, we've got a meeting actually next week we're going to have. I'll bring it up and we may send a letter as well. I'll go down and take a look, only if it's within the town right of way. Otherwise, it's not our jurisdiction. We'll check it out.
Alright, so that motion carries three to one, correct?
Yes.
Yep, okay.
Alright, so I will move to sign tax abatement for map 13-3-9-4-1.
Second.
Seconded by Charlie.
Can you put the dollar amount in there, Lisa?
It's not on the, it's not on the agenda.
Hold on. $22.84.
Okay.
$22.
For the amount of $22.84.
Second.
Charlie was my second.
Charlie seconded, so Kate? Kate, how do you vote?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Motion carries.
Alright, I moved to sign Selectmen's Public, or I moved to approve Selectmen's Public Minutes for May 27, June 1, and June 3, 2020.
Second.
Charlie second. Kate?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Motion carries.
Alright, I moved to sign Selectmen's Non-Public and Public Minutes for June 2, 2020.
Second.
Charlie second. Kate?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Motion carries.
And I see nothing else on our agenda.
Anybody have anything else?
Excuse me, yes, this is Teri.
Yes, Teri.
Hi, I'm sorry, I wasn't able to unmute before when we were discussing about the library and the task force and regarding guidelines. I just wanted to mention, we did have a board meeting with the Board of Trustees today. And I had mentioned about the recommendations, but we were waiting until the vote was tonight if it was approved. So from this point, we will be referring back to the recommendations that were submitted and making adjustments of how it would be applicable to the library because some things are similar and then some things are different. And I think that was a great idea about the air purifier because we could certainly, we have that situation as well. As well as I had a concern about the public restroom in regards to, we only have one and how it would be then maintained for public and for staff. So I just wanted to interject that and let you know that we are definitely referring to the town. And like I said, as much, some things we do have to make some adjustments for, but I just wanted to mention that as well.
So is the trustees looking at any particular target date for reopen, Teri?
Well, what we decided today, what we need, in fact, we've had a situation regarding our cleaning person. And we're trying, and we just voted on that today to have one of our staff members take over that role in a new job position. So we've just had a lot of things that we're, you know, trying to get through. But, so that was decided today, so if, if that goes forward, I think the time that that could be done would be, the person wasn't available until June 23rd, after 22nd. So we're hoping she could come in on the 23rd and then go from there, having staff coming and prepare. And then possibly, if we can work out the details, reopening with a curbside service. And, and maybe do that around the same time as July 6 or thereabouts, the same as the town. But you'll be having in-person, we would, you know, we wouldn't have anybody in the building at that point because I think we still have a ways to go with that. And then see, like, you know, what happens with the curbside and, and adjust as we go.
Excellent, because people are asking, so it'd be nice to be able to tell them something.
Sure, absolutely. Yes.
Thank you.
We are working on it. Thank you. I appreciate all the help and, you know, the task force has been wonderful and very good guidance. And these meetings have been very helpful too, to me. So just, so I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Okay, is there anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
I second that at 7:09 PM.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Have a good night.